Good afternoon. The council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call.
The quorum is now open. The quorum is now open. Please use your e-device vote. The quorum is now open. If you have any questions or need support, please raise your hand. Those who have not yet used the e-device by a voice vote. Alderman Laspada. Alderperson Laspada is present. Alderperson Robinson. Robinson is present. Alderperson Hall. I'm sorry, Alderperson Robinson is not present. Alderperson Hall. Hall is not present. Alderperson Mitchell. Mitchell is present. Alderperson Harris. Harris is present. Alderperson Beal. Beal is present. Alderperson Ramirez. Ramirez is not present in chambers. Alderperson Lopez. Sorry, mine's not. Alderperson Lopez is here? Present? Okay. Alderperson Curtis. Curtis is present. Alderperson O'Shea. Alderperson O'Shea. O'Shea is present. Alderperson Taylor, not present in chambers. Alderperson Scott, not present in chambers. Alderperson Cruz, not present in chambers. Alderperson Cardona. Cardona is present. Alderperson Wagispak. Wagispak is present. Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez, not present in chambers. Alderperson Conway. Conway not present in chambers. Alderperson Viegas. Viegas not present in chambers. Alderperson Mitz. Mitz not present in chambers. Alderperson Spisato. Alderman Spisato is here. Alderperson Napolitano. Napolitano is present. Alderperson Riley. Riley is present. Alderperson Knutson, not present in chambers. Your mayor, we have a quorum.
Very well. Thank you very much. There are 39 people present, 11 absent. We do have a quorum. Are there any members that requested to participate remotely? All right. There are a number of alders that have requested to participate remotely. Those alders are as of following. Alderwoman Mitz, okay, thank you. Alderwoman Taylor, Knutson, Viegas, Ramirez, Rodriguez Sanchez, Gardner's here, Cruz, and Mitz have asked to participate remotely through Rule 49. Can I get a motion to approve their remote participation? It's been moved. Madam Clerk, could you please add them to the roll?
Yes, and I will now also take attendance for those that are virtual to ensure you are here and present. Alderperson Taylor. Alderperson Knutson. Knutson? I see him. Okay, Alderperson Viegas. Alderperson Ramirez. Ramirez is present virtually. Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez.
Here.
Rodriguez Sanchez is present virtually. Alderperson Gardner is in chambers, present. Alderperson Cruz.
Here.
Cruz is present virtually. Alderperson Mitz.
Present.
Mitz is present virtually. Alderperson Scott.
Alderwoman Scott is here.
Alderwoman Scott is here, present virtually. Any others that I missed? All right.
Very well. Thank you very much. Our quorum is now set. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for our invocation, which will be delivered by Reverend Dr. Myron McCoy from the First United Methodist at the Chicago Temple.
Let us pray. Holy One, known to us by many names, we give thanks for all in this room and all remotely and every resident of this city, all created in your own image with dignity and infinite worth. We give thanks for calling all to be good stewards of your creation and to love our neighbors as ourselves. Forgive us whenever we are divided, going in many directions at once, seeking opposite goals, serving contradictory causes, preaching justice, walking in injustice, shouting peace, practicing violence. Deliver us from cowardice that dare not face new truth. Deliver us from laziness that is contented with half-truth. Deliver us from arrogance that thinks it knows all truth. Finally, for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities, help us now to walk in the way of the common good for all the residents of this great city. May it be so. May it be so.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. McCoy. Dr. McCoy, just for the record, you all, as you have your seat, will be retiring at the end of November from the First United Methodist after a decade of service there. And please, let's join me in congratulating Dr. McCoy. This is a portion of the meeting that's designed and set aside for public comment. Mr. Clerk.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for ultimate review. Our first speaker today is Mama the Evangel Yamawee.
Y'all greetings, and to God be the glory. I'm Eve Angel Mama de Love Ya Nubian. I'm representing Nbar, Indigenous Native American rights. And this is regarding noncompliance with the court order to make public comment. And all the other branches of government and the Cook County Board, they all operate on a first-come, first-served basis. They have and they are operating on that basis. But, and they did not have to be ordered by a court to give citizens a voice. But due to a abuse of authority of the last mayor, Lori Lightfoot, we, this body, is in violation of that court order that was heard over an open mic. That clown again. Due to that abuse of authority and that clown again remark, we are under a that clown again lottery system that violates the 14th Amendment because everybody else operates on a first-come, first-served basis. When we are forced into that clown again lottery system, we miss out on other meetings. We couldn't attend the zoning meeting that was up because we had to stand in a line because of that clown again lottery system. Now, I just want to know, what are you going to do to fix it? Do we go back into court and do what we have already done before? Before we had the abuse of authority? Do we have to go back into court and tell the judge, this body is once again unable to conduct its business as adults? And just follow the law? Now, I want to know how you're gonna fix it? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Zoe Lee.
Good afternoon. Mayor Johnson, last year, when I was protesting outside and Jessica Jackson and George Blakemore pushed me to come in here to go on this mic, I asked you, could you please look into my mother's case? Can you please look into what's going on? And let you know that the overall issue is they're stealing black people's property. I also told you that I was living in Georgia at the time, I live in Atlanta, when Georgia flipped blue. And I said that if no one doesn't help me settle this case for my mom, I will do exactly what Georgia did, flip this state red. I asked you for a year. I've written to you too, Mary Richardson-Lawrie, and I asked y'all to please settle my family's case. And it didn't happen. You blocked, I went through every obstacle course in here for y'all to try to block us. Y'all don't care about the U.S. Constitution at all. Y'all don't care about it at all. But I beat every obstacle, including getting arrested down here for my free to violating my First Amendment right. The city of Chicago is the most corrupt city on the planet. And it's run by a democratic machine. And you guys have been doing this for decades. You guys have been taking our generational wealth, the blacks helping as well. And it's going to stop because Trump is getting in office. And the first thing that's gonna happen is the Department of Justice is gonna come here. You don't know how to govern. You don't. Okay, organizer and being in politics, two different things, my boy. So I'm letting you know right now, audits are going to happen. Audits. We're gonna audit everything from CPS, CTU, it's gonna be a lot of audits going on because that's the problem. People have been stealing for a long time and we a billion dollars in debt. How dare you try to make this Detroit? How dare you try to make this Detroit and then try to blame it on Trump? Nah, that's you because you don't know how to govern. Y'all, you're going down as the worst mayor on earth. And y'all are going down as a disgraced 50. Peace.
Our next speaker is Michael Young Bay.
I don't even want to show my face as the disgrace up in here. On the real. You know, we all been coming down here as previous speaker that spoke and been violated our constitutional right to freedom of speech. And it been done by aldermen. It's also been tactics done by your administration. You told a person, and I have the video, I just ain't put it out, you told a person that you fixed the crisis. You fixed the crisis. You ain't fixed nothing. Talking about buses ain't coming in, et cetera. Buses was coming in after December. And then y'all moved to the trains. And then y'all moved to the planes. And now they got automobiles. You know what I'm saying? So we been going through a lot. You know what I'm saying? It take a lot of courage to get up here and for a person of my stature to say they homeless. You know what I'm saying? Like real talk. Y'all see me come up in here clean, et cetera, no matter what. I've been fighting. I done gave the mayor, and I said that a hard drive, et cetera. You know, showing how these shelters did us, showing us how nasty they did. But y'all putting them, you making sure they get that money and putting in five-star hotels. You ignorant. You's a fool. Yes, you is. And I stand on that, even to my death. Because you has been a shame and an embarrassment. And I know firsthand because I'm actually living it. I ain't here to criticize or just call somebody no name or whatever, just to look down on nobody. Nah, man. When she told you that in that council meeting, Sister Dory, you was a disgrace. And that's why they speaking on you like that. That's why we flipping red. We in here with red backpack. Shit, we trying to make the police go red. On the real. We finna change the uniform. We ain't playing. Flip red. We been screaming on that. And amen to that. That's truth. That's how we speaking to power. That's how we know. Just like 45, when he was 45, we stayed alive, even through the pandemic. We stayed alive at 45. And now at 47, we screaming down from the heavens, flip red. Go red! Go red! Go red! We up in here for real. We ain't playing no games. We ain't playing no games. We watching the budget, we watching everything. We ain't no uneducated people. You know what I'm saying? Despite our disparity, despite people trying to take our property, despite the homes, despite the misuse, the misconduct, et cetera, towards the citizens, we speaking up as brave men and women for this country, for this nation, for Chicago. So I want every gang member, every gang member, no matter what you want to vote, fight for, whatever, et cetera, I want y'all to line them poles up. We flipping red. We flipping red. That's what it is. That's what we about. And we about truth and love. And you ain't showed that. You a disgrace. Peace to the people.
Our next speaker is John Cantazera Jr.
Just want to remind people, before the next speaker, before the next speaker don't start his time, just want to remind people that your First Amendment right will always be protected, but we ask that you refrain from using vulgarity. You may commence.
Vulgarity? All right, I'll try my best, I promise. Let's start with go red. So I take exception because I was the one wearing a Trump jersey here when it wasn't fashionable six years ago, and I got mocked for it. So I'm glad people are finally starting to wake up to how bad this democratically ran city has been and how much worse you've made it. Sad but true, when I didn't think it could get worse under that little tyrant. You've definitely doubled down and said, hold my beer. But it's the best friggin' city in America. Great, with a smile. Odd word to the rest of you, because when I was here last month, there were some people in this room that should know but don't know. There is a 10-year-old lawsuit for a federally protected statute, FLSA, for overtime worked by police officers all the way back to 2014 when this city became a deadbeat and refused to pay them at that federal standard, period, instead of the lower Chicago Police Contract overtime. It is literally, since you're in budget season, a $200 million bill that you have to pay. And it has a court-ordered 5% interest rate. And for the chairman of the Budget Committee, last meeting to tell me first, he's hearing of it. And I guarantee he's not the only chairman, I don't mean to point him out, but there's a lot of chairman involved in this. I'm sure Chairman Dow, you have no idea what I'm talking about. I'm sure Corporation Counsel, you have no idea what I'm talking about. Your predecessor actually sent an email to the outside law firm saying, don't include us in these emails anymore. We don't need any updates. You take care of this. Literally, you're a deadbeat. Pay the officers the money they're owed, $200 million that is collecting interest every single day. And by the stunned look on your face, you apparently have no idea either, which I'm not surprised. Again, start waking up to the reality of Chicago and quit trying to make friends everywhere else. Number two, COPA. You literally have not only somebody who hates the police and your administration, but you have somebody working at COPA that should get the same treatment that she's given our officers for the two-plus years she's been in charge. She paid administrative leave effective immediately. She should not be able to run that agency while investigation is going on at the Inspector General's office. That should be fair. And if you are supposedly fair, this body will take action to put her in a paid administrative leave. Lastly, I'll tell you this, Alderwoman Harrison said something to the effect, when it comes to CPS, that we've been doing the same thing for decades. We need to blow the system up and do it right. If you give him his way, taxes are going up for everybody. I challenge you all to consider the fact and champion down in Springfield that teachers should be treated just like police and fire. They shouldn't have the ability to strike. They should have to go to interest arbitration to get their contracts upheld. Because it is a public safety issue every time they threaten to strike and walk out. It's upheaval in this city, and enough is enough. They can get interest arbitration. If it's good enough for police and fire, it should be good enough for them. And it will basically cut the legs off from underneath him what he's trying to do.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Danielle Carter.
Hello. So, well, we refer to you all as gated community politicians. You all are so out of touch with reality and the citizens of Chicago and America is crazy. And I'm gonna call it the Democrat Party. Y'all so out of touch. Y'all don't understand that what you all, I don't know if y'all don't understand, but y'all don't see it. America is coming together and Chicago is coming together. Black, white, it don't matter. Because see, we see a common threat. And you all are a common threat to America and Chicago. How dare you sit up there and go on TV and say, Chicago people are dope? When you talking about how you handle the migrant crisis, illegal crisis, when they all in my neighborhood? Now, I can't go across the street and do a simple workout. I'm a trainer. I'm trying to educate the citizens of Chicago. Help dads be in the homes, educate them about health, fitness, how it is to be healthy with your kids. Eat healthy. Work out, do something for the community. And I gotta go through all these permits, all these hoops, everything. I got insurance to go in the park. But then I see illegals down the street from my house with a whole entire restaurant. I thought I was looking at Donald Trump when he was at McDonald's. They sit up there and had generators on the street, on the sidewalk, generators. And they had a fry machine taking the basket out the oil, putting it on the side. And not only that, they had tables. Tables and booths set up, like a whole restaurant outside. I just sit there, I couldn't believe what I was seeing. Trays, putting the french fries in, all the smoke out here, and they serving the people with aprons on, outside. Now, my taxes then went up. Now, they not putting nothing into, my husband is a retired police. He gave 28 years to this. And now you gonna sit there and talk about we dope and we okay? No, we not okay with that. We tried to tell you that. Sanctuary cities, we didn't want it, but you blocked that. You all don't believe in democracy. Democracy is out the door. You all believe in dictatorship. But that's okay, because like I said, when Trump, we all for Trump. And we're gonna, he's demolishing these sanctuary cities because that's what the American citizens want. See, he listen to the people. And that's what the people want. So you all sit up there and think it's cool, but remember, the same thing make y'all laugh is gonna make y'all cry. Ever, listen, we put you all in office to advocate for us. All these illegals in our neighborhood and y'all just, it's funny now, yeah, okay, this place and us, it's cool.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Jodi Widiker.
Good morning, Mayor Johnson and Chicago City Council. Thank you for your time today and interest. I am speaking today on behalf of Chicago Alliance for Animals, more than 3,000 members and millions more who want to see fur banned. For those of you who may not be aware, this issue goes way beyond the fact that beautiful wild animals are trapped in wire cages in all extremes of temperatures and weather, only to be electrocuted to have their fur, to be skinned for their fur. So I appreciate the 21, last count, 21 cosponsors of this bill, and I hope that more of you will cosponsor. I want to read a quick press release from the Coalition to Abolish the Fur Trade USA. Chicago's Fashion Week's leadership in responsible fashion, we hope inspires other Fashion Weeks to follow suit in promoting compassion and innovation in the industry. Fashion events have a significant influence on industry standards. Chicago's Fashion Week's bold decision to adopt a fur-free policy reflects the growing consumer demand for more ethical fashion. The announcement is indicative of a larger shift in the fashion landscape as it follows several major brands, including Max Mara and Marc Jacobs that have recently announced fur-free policies. The use of fur is increasingly viewed as outdated and cruel. And designers still clinging to these practices will face mounting pressure from advocates and consumers alike. The Coalition to Abolish the Fur Trade will continue its efforts to promote ethical practices across the industry, emphasizing that consumer expectations are shifting and that brands must adapt to this new reality. Chicago Fashion Week's decision is a pivotal moment, and both CAFT and ARC will remain engaged in advocating for a compassionate fashion future. So the fact that Chicago's Fashion Week went fur-free and will remain fur-free is huge. And so we are hoping that those of you who have not yet cosponsored, 02023-2983, will cosponsor, will get it on the license agenda and pass it as soon as possible. Because like I said, it goes beyond more than the humane aspect. It's a real danger to our health. And in this world of COVID, when we put all of these wild animals in extreme confinement, that's when viruses arrive. And viruses can jump from animals to humans. And there have been multiple examples of fur farms having these issues where all the animals have to be culled to prevent viruses from getting to us. So it's also a public safety issue. So thank you for your time, and I hope you will pass this humane measure and common sense measure soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Tuan Sims.
484, well, when y'all ready, 484 million that Pedro Martinez proposed shouldn't even move nowhere. The $1 billion that y'all put on black American children heads, you said something at a meeting recently. What you say to, what's official about a black man or something official, because them women in the background were screaming at you about official? But I noticed how you use your blackness. But it was a statement that you made that exposed you. You said brown and black. If I was a black, I'm a black man. I'm black American 44 years. When I think, I think towards my nation. I'm not selfish in that sense because I speak for the people. I'm not selfish in that sense, because I speak for the people. I wish we had a leader like that, a representative, a mayor, for the black American people, though. A billion dollars, that was, I wonder, where was that supposed to go? Was we supposed to just focus on the budget, and then y'all just whittle that up under us once again? Or did it come with the, um, "Save the streets"? Was that the Friday thing that y'all did, but you have not said anything no more? He slept in the street. He slept, he, it was gunshots around him. But you could care less about the citizens here, the residents. And I'm sure that by the treatment with the kids, y'all won't get away with it. 484 million, and he wanna take that out of the TIF, but you got your criminal friend C. Joe Lopez over there trying to get a TIF going, right? Y'all did everything for the illegals while y'all stomped us down. And look, when he taking that 484 million, understand that it's out of the TIF. So that's out of the wards, and those wards that's gonna get hit are Inglewood, Austin, South Shore, right? Because y'all not taking nothing from nobody else, because y'all building up Gage Park, Pilsen, and Little Village, right? Well, forget black Americans. But I am telling y'all, Jack, it don't work no more. It's over with. This Democratic Party, y'all did it, y'all sunk y'all ship. Rats jump ship, that's why the school board jumped ship. When they feel that low, they jump ship, all of them. And then, look, they start descending on each other, too. So we noticed that how y'all fed Pedro to the wolves. Nobody showed up for him, not the newly-elected board, not this previous board. And y'all hit him with the budget, because we needed to hear that. And thank William for bringing up the realness that y'all try to, right up underneath us, because y'all don't believe in the residency in Chicago. You done, Jack, black man. And I don't attack black people, but you have utilized that coveted, that sublimated racism that you harbor, that self-loathing that you harbor in you. Rick Bayless is a great cook, but there are other great black American cooks in this city that you could have celebrated through, to give them highlight. You are what he called you, a disgrace to your nation, to your city. You are not the representation that we thought you would be in your intellect.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Tre'alak O'Sullivan.
Hello, everyone. My name's Tre'alak O'Sullivan, housing organizer with Plancha LSNA, the predominant group representing Latinos on the northwest side of Chicago. It makes me sad to hear the genuine discontent of people living in communities that have been screwed by this city and this country for decades, going back to the founding. But then, for that to be channeled into the people at the very root of the problem, like Donald J. Trump. But that's not why I'm here. I came to say thank you to the Alders, and especially thank you to Mayor Brandon Johnson for the leadership in a difficult time. There are a majority of progressives in this city. Hang on, can I speak? I'd like to remind us, it's no fluke that this man's elected. And we look back to the previous election, who we thought we were getting a progressive. We thought we were electing a progressive, too. It's a majority. We may not be the loudest, but we are here. He's probably got the hardest job in town. He has to sit up here and listen to this, and there's so much. So while nothing can be perfect, you're dealing with a city that's been mismanaged for decades and decades. And I want to say thank you, because we see you trying. And there's also been victories. We on the northwest side of Chicago have an ordinance for balanced development. And we've also seen efforts for economic development in the city as a whole. We're finally breaking the pattern of free handouts to millionaires like Lincoln Yards. And what instead is being done is using the bond fund to actually develop the communities that badly need it. When we think of the misinformation and the scare tactics that money interests use, I gotta come back to history for a second, because some people think we can forget history. When you look at the racial apartheid this country was founded on, when you look at how groups in this city were able to build wealth in a similar manner with modernized tactics like redlining, restrictive covenants, predatory lending, that is not easy to fix. You cannot put a Band-Aid on a bullet hole. It takes a fight, it takes courage, and Mayor Brandon Johnson is actually doing that. I want to talk briefly about our ordinance, the Northwest Preservation Ordinance, which has made it harder for developers to de-convert the two-to-four-flat naturally occurring affordable housing in our communities. When you talk about historic affordable housing, people who knock it down, they put a luxury single-family home, pushing out the people that built this city and deserve to live in this city. We are making it harder. From a supply and demand perspective and from affordable housing perspective, we are keeping the people in our community, keeping it affordable. So we've seen an outpouring of support for this policy. It has people over the moneyed interests. 1,000 people signed on, who actually live in the community, unlike the other aldermanic prerogative, but I'm not trying to be a hater. 60 CBOs signed on to this organization. But there are special interest critics in the real estate community who have the audacity to call this a new form of redlining. And if you believe them, I feel very sorry for you. It's gonna take longer than three minutes to tell you how it is. It takes courage to stand with the moral high ground against these special interests, money, and power, and Brandon Johnson's doing this. We know you're trying to achieve something in this city. It takes a long time, so we appreciate you, we see you. That's why you're in office, we're prepared to go to bat for you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker this afternoon is Jessica Jackson.
We're gonna excuse the young'un, he just don't know no better, all right? Okay, anyway, how you doing, Mayor Brandon Johnson? You all right? Okay, good. I'm gonna let him learn what really, what time it really is with you, okay? All right. Now, I've been coming here for a year, talking about my mother's estate, asking you for over a year to clear this issue with my mother's estate. I came here talking about how the probate process steals black people's property with the help of the Public Administration Office. I came here saying that the judges were part of it and that the Public Administration, and I even named names. You've had ample opportunity to help me, and you did not. And you know you did not. So I don't know why you pay people to come here, to act like you on it for the city and for the citizens, because you're not. You're running the city to the ground. We've asked you over and over again to stop with the spending. We've told your cronies to stop with the spending. They won't stop you. They're letting you run ragged in here, they're letting you run the city through the ground. They won't stop you. So because of that, you've given us no choice. We gotta go to the federal level. We gotta go to Donald J. Trump, because he's made it clear what he's gonna do. See, I got to have some help. I got to have some help. I can't let you and Cook County and the city take what my mother worked for and left for her children just because you feel like it, just because the Democratic Party think they all that, like they untouchables? This is America. You bringing these people over here that's from socialist countries and all this and that, and y'all think y'all gonna run that here? Black America saying, "No, you not." The true white Americans are saying, "No, you not." The true Latino, the true Asians are saying, "No, you not." I'm telling you, Brandon Johnson, from my heart to yours, Trump 2024, no more blue, no matter who. Donald, Donald J. Trump, Trump 2024. He gonna stop the bleeding, he gonna deal with this sanctuary city, and he gonna help us get you out, and he gonna get you, anybody out who roll with you, who think they gonna tear up Chicago? Y'all getting out, too. This is our city. You can sit there, think like you acting like you ain't paying attention, acting like it don't apply to you? Oh, yes, it does. You ain't untouchable either, Silverstein. We coming for anybody who ain't about Chicago. You got that? Trump 2024, big baby.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is George Blake Moore.
You're talking about Trump, and you're talking about Camilla or whoever, and also about this President, uh, Amir. America is a racist country. What? America was built on slave labor, a racist country. Black, life matters. America is what, Mr. Blake Moore? A racist country. Now, if you get Biden in, oh, he's old, he's like Camilla. Or you get Trump in, which I'm voting for Trump. The reason I'm voting for Trump is because I want to get rid of these Democrat racists. And you know they do have Republican racists, too. On my way to Freedom Land. On my damn way to Freedom Land. You think I'm a damn fool? They got Republicans that are racist, too. Democrats are racist, and I am, could be called a racist because self-preservation is the first law of nature. I'm advocating for black, so I'm gonna say, "Go black! Go black, but go red! On our way to Freedom Land, to go black! Go red, go black." So I'm doing revenge. I want to get evil with the democratic machine. It go way back, racism, the democratic machine here, with this sanctuary mess. Some black folk voted for sanctuary. Some of these black elected officials voted for this. But I'm going red for my reason, and you going red for your reason. But what do we have in common? We both going red. On our way to where? Freedom Land! Freedom Land! Freedom Land! So the Hispanics been coming over here illegal, long before the Venezuelans. They been wading across the water, Rio Grande. The Hispanics, the Asians, all these groups, they are selfish. Self-preservation is the first law of nature. They're coming over to help themselves. Black people, I urge you. Self-preservation is the first law of nature. You focus on you, but I'm going red on my way to Freedom Land. God have given every black person everything you need. All you have to do is use what God have given you. If you don't use what you got to get what you want, you don't need what you got. Right now, what I have is my vote, to go red! To go red!
Thank you very much for your comments. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have time to sign up for the public comment, period.
Thank you very much to all of our public speakers. All right, thank you. Thank you, thank you very much. So for, all right, thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Public speaking is now over. Thank you. We do not have any resolutions. Next up, Communications.
I City Clerk Anna Valencia hereby inform the City Council the following documents filed in my office. Office of Inspector General's Third Quarter Report of Investigations, Audits, and Reviews for Year 2024. I City Clerk Valencia also inform the City Council the following ordinances which were passed by the City Council on October 9, 2024, which requested to be published in special pamphlets, were published in special pamphlet form on October 15, 2024. Issuance of City of Chicago Forest Supplemental and Denture Securing Second Lean Wastewater Transmission Revenue Bonds or Funding Series 2024B. In possession of Tax Leivies Budget and Service Provider Agreements for Special Service Areas Number 1-2015, 1920, 21-2016, 24, 25, 43, 44, 54, and 75. I City Clerk Valencia also transmit here with the following communications requiring City Council action. Zoning Reclassifications of Particular Areas, which refer to Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. And your Honor, that concludes the reports and communications for the mayor and other city officers.
Very well, thank you, Madam Clerk. Committee reports. We'll start with our Committee on Budget and Government Operations. The Chair recognizes Chair Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the City Council reporting for the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations, which held the meeting on October 21, 2024. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following items. The first item I'm reporting out is a transfer of funds within the First Ward Wage Allowance and Automatic Expense Account for Year 2024. Mr. President, I move passage by a roll-call vote.
Very well. Members, please use your e-vote application to record your vote at this time.
The voting is now open, the voting is now open. Please mark your e-device, or please use your e-device to mark your vote. The voting is now open. Use your e-device. I will now call those who have not used their e-device for voting. Alderperson Robinson. Robinson is yes. Alderperson Hall. Hall is not present. Alder, oh, Alderperson Ramirez.
Yes.
Ramirez is yes. Alderperson Gutierrez. Gutierrez is yes. Alderperson Rodriguez. I see it just now. Alderperson Scott.
Yes.
Alderperson Cruz.
Yes.
Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Alderperson Mitz.
Aye.
Alderperson Lawson. Alderperson Taylor, are you there with us? Okay, Alderperson Vegas? Or Alderperson Knutson? Okay? Alderperson Mitz? She voted, okay.
Aye.
With all those who voted, the voting is now closed.
Very well, thank you very much. There are 46 ayes, there are zero nays. This matter is passed. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to reconsider.
Mr. President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of reconsidering this vote signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. This motion fails. Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin. Apologies. Chair recognizes Alderman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. I hadn't logged in on my device. It clearly says I'm not absent. I just want to make sure I was marked here for quorum.
Well, in a very dramatic fashion, it is very clear that you are present.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, next item is a transfer of funds within the Third Ward, Wage Allowance and Automatic Expense Account for the Year 2024. I move passage of this item by the same roll-call previous applied to the first matter reported on the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing none, so ordered.
The next item is a transfer of funds within the 13th Ward, Wage Allowance and Automatic Expense Account for Year 2024. There's no objection, I make the same motion.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Next item is a transfer of funds within the Committee on Zoning Landmark Standards, Landmarks and Building Standards for the Year 2024. If there's no objection, I make the same motion.
Hearing none, so ordered.
The next item is a transfer of funds within the Committee on Health and Human Relations for the Year 2024. If there's no objection, I make the same motion.
Hearing none, so ordered.
The next item is a transfer of funds within the 41st Ward, Wage Allowance and Automatic Expense Account for Year 2024. There's no objection, I make the same motion.
Hearing none, so ordered.
And the last item is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning an annual appropriation to an Innenial Appropriation Order for Year 2024 amendment within Fund 925. If there's no objection, I make the same motion.
Hearing none, so ordered.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next Committee on Rules, Chair recognizes Chair Harris.
President, reporting for your Committee on Committees and Rules with met on Tuesday, October 22, 2024, 1:00 p.m. The committee recommends the passage of the following items. The committee recommends that Item 1 be re-referred to the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Item 1 is an ordinance authorizing a redevelopment agreement with Outwest Gallery and Cafe at 5249 West Chicago. The committee recommends this item be re-referred to the Committee on Budget and Governmental Operations. I move approval of this recommendation by the first most favorable roll-call vote of the Committee on Budget and Government Operations and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 2, 2 through 12 are appointments and ordinances regarding administration and scope of services of various SSAs. Item 2, the appointment of Joan Elu as a special member of Special Service 34. Item 3, a reappearance of Juliana Monteballo Roman as a special service area number 14. 4311 are various scopes of service, budget, tax levy, and service provider agreements for special service areas 4, 23, number 5 through, dash, 2015, number 47, number 55, number 56, dash, 2022, number 73, number 31. Item 12 is a Class 8 micro property tax incentive for former U.S., for the former U.S. Steel Mill located in the Seventh and the Tenth Wards, and an agreement of a municipal code Chapters 2-8 and 2-45 to waive various fees for Class 8 micro projects. The committee recommends that these be re-referred to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technical Development. I move approval of these items by the same roll call vote previously applied to Item 1 and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing none, so ordered.
The committee recommends that Item 13 through 18 be referred to the Committee on Finance. 13 is an intergovernmental agreement with Chicago's Board of Education for TIF funds for improvements at Chicago Vocational Academy High School. Item 14 permits fee waivers for Chicago Board of Education as contractors or contracting vendors for public use year 2025. Item 15 is a redevelopment agreement with assurance of TIF funds to the Revolution Workshop for Agreement at 3410 West Lake Street. Item 16 is a tax-exempt housing revenue bonds for late preservation phase IC project. 17 is a redevelopment agreement with financial assistance to the Thrive Exchange LLC for acquisition of city-owned vacant lot at 7909 South Exchange and construction furnishings and equipments of a low-income housing development at 7901-7907 and 7911 South Exchange Avenue. Item 18 is a redevelopment agreement with an assurance of TIF funds to the Hart Uptown Apartments LLC and PAOH TIF LLC for acquisitions and redevelopment of Hart of Uptown Apartments. I move approval of the recommendations that Items 13 through 18 be re-referred to the Committee on Finance by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
The committee recommends that Item 19 through 25 be re-referred to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. 19 is the appointment of LaShawn Cobb as Commissioner of the Housing Authority. 20 is the amendment of the municipal code Chapters 2-51 and 2-154 modifying economic disclosure statement requirements for temporary occupancy agreements. Item 21 is the sale of city-owned property at 2810, 2824 East 87th Street to 2804 East 87th Street LLC DBA, the record track for creation of outdoor space. Item 22 is the sale of city-owned land at 5143 South Wilcox Avenue to Alfredo, sir, sir, huh? Hmm. Mm-hmm. At Alfredo Salantes for the creation of fence flowers and vegetable gardens. Item 23 is an amendment to the lease number 20288 with Cook County property at 937, 937 North Wood Street. Item 24 is amendment to the Right of Entry Agreement for time extensions to continue research activities at 220 East Monroe Street by Lincoln Park Zoological Society. Item 25 is an amendment to the Right of Entry Agreement for time extension for Columbia Yacht Club parking under John Baptiste De Sabo Lakeshore Drive. I move approval of the recommendations that Items 19 through 25 be re-referred to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
The committee recommends that Item 26 be re-referred to Police and Fire. The appointment of Sierra Whitaker as a member of the District Council's 6. I move approval that the recommendation that Item 26 be re-referred to the Committee on Police and Fire by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
The committee recommends that Item 27 and 28 be re-referred to the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. 27 is expenditure of open space impact fees for the improvement of Gothic Elementary Schools Athletic and Recreational Facility. 28 is an expenditure of open space impact fee funds to the neighbor, neighbor space for installation of permanent infrastructure in community open space and garden. The committee recommends that these items be re-referred to the Committee of Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. I move approval of these items by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
And the final item, the committee recommends that Item 29 be re-referred to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Acquisition of various properties for Inglewood Nature Trail. The committee recommends that Item 29 be re-referred to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. I move approval by the, approval of this recommendation by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The chair recognizes Alderman Will Hall.
President, may you add me to the most favorable roll call?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Could you please add Alderwoman, I'm sorry, Alderman Will Hall to the most favorable roll call in the committee?
Mr. President, Alderman Knutson is present and would like to be added to the first most favorable roll call as well.
Very well, thank you, Madam Clerk. You picked up on that one as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Committee on License and Consumer Protection, Chair recognizes Chairwoman Silverstein.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the city council. I'm reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We held a meeting on October 21st, 2024 to consider nine ordinances regarding liquor moratoriums in the Third, Eleventh, Twelfth, Sixteenth, Thirty-third, Thirty-fifth, and Forty-second wards. The committee has recommended passage of each of these items, O2024-0007334, and others ending 12609, 12611, 12612, 12808, 12873, 12893, 13127, and 13137. Mr. President, I move that the city council concur in the recommendations of the License Committee by the same roll call as Item Number 1 of the Committee of Finance, on the Committee on Finance Report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
The one on budget, correct?
Yes.
The first favorable call on budget. Thank you.
On budget, I'm sorry, yes.
Very well, Madam Chair. Hearing no objections, so ordered.
O2024-0010006, an ordinance to establish of a small business protection rebate program. This has been re-referred to the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Chair recognizes Chair Laspada.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, for which a meeting was held on Monday, October 21st, 2024. Before the committee, there were 201 routine traffic items, all of which passed. If there are no objections, I move passage of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote from the Committee on Budget and Government Operations and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider the vote.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Before the committee were also the following three items. O2024-0010990, Amendment of Municipal Code Section 9-12-070, establishing maximum speed limit of 25 miles per hour on streets, 15 miles per hour in alleys, and absolute statutory non-urban limit of 55 miles per hour. Substitute ordinance SO2024-0010993, Amendment of Municipal Code Chapter 9-108, by adding new section 9-108-025, establishing public enforcement pilot program for residents to submit recorded evidence of covered parking offenses, and SR2024-0010992, call for establishment of inter-agency working group to assess and redesign speed limit enforcement structures and practices in City of Chicago. Alderwoman Cruz and I move to defer and publish these items.
Very well.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee on Workforce Development, Chair recognizes Chair Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the city council. Reporting for the Committee on Workforce Development, which held a meeting on Tuesday, October 15th, there were two items on the agenda. The first item on the agenda was a resolution recognizing National First Responders Day and declaring October 28th as First Responders Day in the City of Chicago. At our committee meeting last week, we asked members to bring any first responders they wanted to acknowledge at the committee. I acknowledged Lisandra Nava, who worked tirelessly to bring healing and justice to victims of violence in my community. My colleagues Chico, Curtis, Gutierrez, and Yansey brought Sergeants, Sergeant Rudy Vargas, Officer Filiberto Rosas, Officer Megan O'Shaughnessy, Officer Carl Pruitt, Officer Delilah Goree. Today, we have Officer Munoz and Officer Mathis of the Chicago Police Department. We also had Deputy Cook County Sheriff Christopher Suggs, Lieutenant Quentin Curtis of the Chicago Fire Department. I wish I had the time to personally thank every first responder in the City of Chicago by name, including those behind the scenes, the violence prevention workers, emergency dispatchers, our amazing paramedics and officers who are the first on the scene to any crisis. If you would, if you would join me, colleagues, can I ask, can I ask all first responders in the room to please stand up? Let's give them a warm applause.
Thank you for that acknowledgement, Chairman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm happy to report this resolution passed unanimously out of committee. Unless there's any objection, I move for the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance to be applied to this report.
Chair recognizes Alderman.
Ah, forgive me. Unless there's an objection, I.
Oh, the budget, thank you.
Yeah, I move first most favorable roll call on the Committee of Budget to be applied to this report.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for that catch again. The chair recognizes Alder Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good afternoon, members of the city council. I too rise in support of First Responders Day, but I think that every day should be First Responders Day. I think it's unconscionable that we have the fire department four years without a contract, that we still have mental health crises in our police districts, in our police department that we're not addressing, and that we are routinely demonizing in this chamber those who we task with even the most basic things, as we're going to be tasking shortly, even reducing the speed limits in the City of Chicago. Saying that we support first responders, saying that we support these individuals isn't enough. And I think it's very telling that even in this chamber, which I joined in 2015 along many, many of you, every committee, every council meeting used to start with a recognition of a police and a fireman either individually or their unit that did something heroic in the City of Chicago. That should be how we recognize our first responders. That should be how we lift them up and share their stories. And I actually challenge you, Mr. President, to bring back that tradition. Because if we are going to say that we recognize our first responders, that we support them, appreciate them, love them, glad that they run in when everyone else runs out, then there's no reason why this box should be empty. There's no reason why we cannot get back to the time-honored tradition of recognizing, at least with one or two resolutions, those brave souls, those brave daughters and sons of Chicago who are first responders here. This is great, but we should be able to do better at every meeting, because I know, as many of you know, that the heroes among us put their lives on the line every single day, that their stories oftentimes are forgotten by headlines or by individuals with agendas who are claiming them to be something that they're not, or by bureaucrats who try to weaponize their departments and demean them to demoralize departments. Let's bring back the tradition, Mr. President, of recognizing police, fire, OEMC for what they do every month, and let's start with the next meeting on October 30th. Thank you.
Very well, thank you. Seeing no other hands, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item on the agenda, O2024-0013176, was a direct introduction, an ordinance authorizing the execution of the collective bargaining agreements between the City of Chicago and the International Brotherhood of Teamsters, Teamsters Local Union Number 743. This ordinance also passed unanimously out of committee. Unless there's an objection, I move for the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Budget to be applied to this report.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
This concludes the report of the Committee on Workforce Development.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. For the agreed-upon calendar, the chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you. I've received from City Clerk Andrea M. Valencia a total of eight items proposed for the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory commemorative tributary resolutions from the following alderpersons. Alderperson O'Shea, Alderperson Mosley, Alderperson Tabarez, Alderperson Irving. The following aldermen would like to be added to Alderperson Irvin's resolution. Harris, Burnett, and Talitheryl. And finally, our last agreed-upon matter is Alderperson Spazano. That concludes my report.
Very well. Before you make the motion for, go ahead and make the motion.
Wish to approve these in the omnibus.
Very well. The chair recognizes, the chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow.
Mr. President, I too want to be added to Alderman Mosley's agreed resolution and also to the tribute to Dana Starks.
Very well, Madam Clerk, thank you for that recognition. Please add Alderwoman Dow's name to those two recognitions. The chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I would like to be added to the Dana Starks recognition, and I'm not sure on the agreed calendar, are we allowed to comment or no?
Don't know if that's within our rules. Do you want to speak to that particular item?
If it's not in the rules, I don't want to do it.
To that particular item, the chair recognizes Alderman Moore, please.
Thank you. And I don't know if we're going to do something later on, but for me, Dana Starks, this was a huge loss for people who cared about him, for the work that he did for this city. I had an opportunity to work with him, not only at the Chicago Housing Authority, but while I was a block club president, and the work that he did to help clean up crime in this city as a, as first deputy before he became acting commander was exceptional. And we got so many things accomplished, got so many people involved in our community, but was able to also rid some of our blocks that, that I only see a few of today that were taken over by, whether it was drug dealers or other people, but yet we went in, and he was one of the first ones to teach me how to go talk to these guys, a lot of people on our blocks first, and I thanked him for that. So I just thank you, Alderman Irvin, for bringing this, and he's a person that really did some great work in this city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Alder. And yes, there'll be, I'm sure his widow and his family appreciates those comments. I think that his record particularly in the 11th district is certainly remarkable, and I know those services are on Thursday, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. And so with that name being added, there's been a motion for the passage of the agreed-upon calendar in the omnibus. If no one else wishes to speak, hearing no objections, so ordered. Now for new business, the clerk will call the wards, beginning with the first.
Zoning amendments which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Exemption from physical barrier requirement for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities, which are referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Hopkins has proposed a resolution to amend the city council rules of order procedure by replacing Rule 42 with a new Rule 42 entitled Committee Description of Subject Matter Jurisdiction, which is referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Two committees call the Committee on Committees and Rules and the Committee on Finance. The matter is referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderperson Hall has proposed ordinance for amendment of the annual appropriation ordinance within Fund 100 for the automatic expense account, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Lee has proposed order for the issuance of permits for.
Alderperson Lee has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 810 West Pershing Road, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Ramirez has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 4023 South Archer Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Lopez has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter 2-156, by modifying various sections regarding governmental ethics for lobbyists and city council contractors, and prohibiting the use of city property imagery by a candidate for city office, which is referred to Committee on Ethics. Two committees call the matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderperson Lopez also has proposed orders for amendment of Municipal Code, Section 2-8-050, allowing use of automatic expense funds for improvements of leased or rented property when value of improvements is abated per rental agreement, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Lopez also has proposed resolution for amendment of City Council Rules of Order and Procedure by modifying Rule 46, requiring electronic copies of legislation to be made available to Alderperson's 48 hours in advance of meetings, which is referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Two committees call the Committee on Committees and Rules and the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. The matters referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderperson Lopez also has a proposed resolution for amendment of City Council Rules of Order and Procedure by modifying Rule 58, striking 30-minute inclusive time limit for public comments, which is referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Two committees call the Committee on Committees and Rules and the Committee on Finance. The matters referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderperson Lopez also has proposed resolution for amendment of City Council Rules of Order and Procedure by modifying Rule 59, allowing Alderperson to submit requests for attendance recusal if unavailable to attend committee or city council meetings, which is referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Two committees haven't been called, the Committee on Committees and Rules and the Committee on Ethics. The matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderperson Lopez also has proposed resolution for amendment of City Council Rules of Order and Procedure by modifying Rule 8, allowing lobbyists to use city-owned property within council chamber for purposes unrelated or to authorized meetings with specific alderpersons, which is referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Two committees haven't been called, the Committee on Committees and Rules and the Committee on Housing. The matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderperson Moore has proposed amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4-60-022, to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portions of West 69th Street, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Rodriguez has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section 9-64-206, relocating parking meters from 2600 through 2611 South Comenskey Avenue to 2558 through 2547 South Karloff Avenue, and establishing a 30-minute standing zone on portion of South Comenskey Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Alderperson Rodriguez has proposed ordinance for transfer of funds within the 22nd Ward Automatic Expense Account for the year 2024, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Irving has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4-60-023, to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portions of West Surmac Road, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Two committees call the Committee on License and the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. The matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 3944 West Lawrence Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Ramirez Rosa has proposed orders for amendment of Municipal Code, Sections 4-60-022 and 4-60-023, to disallow additional alcoholic liquor and packaged goods licenses on portion of West Wrightwood Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Ramirez Rosa also has proposed orders for amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4-60-022, to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of West Fullerton Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Vasquez has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4-60-022, to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of North Lincoln Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public... Which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Manaha Hoppenworth has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Tam Yam Chung Wei, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Your Honor, that concludes the presentation of the automatic introductions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. For unfinished business, the chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I am aware of one piece of unfinished business. It was filed by Alderman Dow, and I defer to her.
Very well, thank you. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I filed a Rule 41 notice with the clerk of my intent to call for a vote on substitute ordinance SO 2024-0012442 concerning the refunding of General Obligation Sales Tax Securitization Corporation Bond Series 2024, which was deferred and published on October 9th, 2024. I move for passage of this item by a roll call vote. I reserve the right to close if anyone wishes to speak to this item.
Very well, thank you very much, Chairwoman Dow. The chair recognizes Alderman Conway.
So I... Believe me, I understand why many in this chamber may be inclined to vote no. Like most of you and most Chicagoans, I agree that we've gotten steamrolled by the administration on some things like ShotSpotter and CPS and Brighton Park, to name a few. Now, and I haven't been shy about speaking up on those things, so it would be easy for me to pile on and reject this because maybe we're getting steamrolled on this as well, or there's some similar flaw in governance. It would be easy to reflexively dismiss this proposal. And believe me, I came to this with that skepticism and that lens. But I also come to this with the lens of someone who handled a hundred bond offerings at JP Morgan, who teaches finance at DePaul University. So you can trust me when I say I studied this thoughtfully. Now, when this came up, I had significant concerns about the language in the original ordinance that would have allowed these funds to potentially be used for operational purposes. However, I want to thank Chairwoman Dow and CFO Jaworski for their leadership in addressing those concerns. The language has now been amended to ensure that these funds can now only be legally used for cost-saving debt refinancing, which is a much more fiscally responsible approach. In very brief summary here, the first billion dollars of this authorization allows a CFO to replace current general obligation debt with collateralized sales tax securitized debt, which carries a lower interest rate and will then therefore allow us to pay less in interest. And the other $500 million, give or take, will allow the CFO to replace higher interest sales tax debt with lower interest debt at the option of the investors, should they choose to deal with that offer. And that's it. That's what this does. So I also am sure someone may say something about the fees. I had misgivings on the fees. They are indeed a higher percentage than what the state of Illinois pays, but this is a very small amount relative to the size of this authorization and this offering. So it's... And it's also worth noting that our debt is lower-rated and harder to place than that of the state. So if paying a little extra fees gives us a few lower basis points of yield, believe me, it is beyond worth it. Now, I know you all. I consider you all friends, and I know that each and every one of you, or at least most of you, ran for Alderman to make our city better and to govern, not to simply obstruct for the sake of politics. So I urge you to vote for this. It's not just a win for the mayor. This is a win for the City of Chicago, so I ask you all to support this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other alders that wish to speak to this item? I see one more hand. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the City Council. You know, I've been around this room long enough to have heard now three different administrations tell me, "Trust us. We know what we're doing." Trust us when we ask you to take on more debt. Trust us if we don't have the money to pay our bills. Trust us. We have a plan. Your first meeting, Mr. President, the very first thing I said back then, and we were talking simply about $51 million for migrants, was, "Show me the money." And just as I said it then, it still applies today. Because yes, while some of our colleagues may be more versed in how to sell bonds and make money off these kind of ventures, I am not. But what I do know is this: If you have the opportunity to claw back even 5% from big banks, from investment people, from those folks that many of you in here rail against, campaign against, and talk about and dog every single day, why won't we do it? Why would we say no to trying to keep more of our money for our own issues? Why would members of your finance team not try to make the case, not just to one member, but to every member? Because I know Jill and company didn't reach out to me, and I'm the one, along with Alderman Tabarez, who DNP'd this last month. We did that because we had concerns. We had concerns both about spending, about closing loopholes tighter, which, yes, information was amended from the first one, but, you know, narrowing and closing are two totally different things. Our concerns are and were, were and are, excuse me, that avenues are being created so that money can be used for operating expenses and for the continuation of living beyond our means. We have seen where even just today, $20 million was refunded back to the City of Chicago in the Budget Committee's report to try to fill this hole that we have for this year because of expenses related to the migrant asylum seekers. Hearing also that that's probably the last we're going to see from the state or the federal government in terms of reimbursements. Where else are we going to find these reimbursements? Well, I can tell you that, as my colleagues know, and as we discussed in committee, these savings have already been actualized and written into the budget that we have yet to see. We haven't said yes, but the administration is already counting on that yes to be approved and that yes to continue and for those savings to be there. And I think it's important to recognize, colleagues, that the market, even from one month to the next, has already changed against us. As we look and see, the rate, the U.S. Treasury rate, as shared by someone who follows this immensely, our state comptroller, Susanna Mendoza, went from 3.65 to 4.19. That rate of borrowing is an increase that will take away from this perceived savings, from this perceived financial benefit that we're talking about. Mr. President, we definitely know and understand that this is about trying to save money. And it's interesting that we have no issues making that case today about trying to save money and be fiscally responsible, when not two weeks ago, everyone who espoused that was accused of being the grandchildren of the Confederacy. But today, we are here again, listening, being told, being sold a bill of goods that, quite frankly, the banks just can't cash. A billion dollars in debt to continue to refinance and kick the can further and further when interest rates are changing against us and when fees are still stacked against us, and we're just being told, "Well, it's our right. Go with it." I don't want to go with it, Mr. President. I know, and I agree. Administrations before borrowed and borrowed and borrowed because they were hoping to be gone by the time the statement came due. My first budget meeting, as many of yours, we had to address a $550 million tax increase to cover all of the debts that were owed in 2015 by administrations long since gone. My concern, Mr. President, and members of the City Council, is that this is just going to be one of many more cans that we kick down the road, so that when we are on our retirement, when we are on our way out, the next class and the class after that will have to make those heavy lifts because we refuse to start living within our means, to start asking those questions about what we can do to claw back money for the taxpayers, what we can do to hold banks accountable, to pay their fair share, as the saying goes, to Chicagoans, to make sure that as much money as possible could stay in the hands in this room, to pay our bills, to live in our own, under our own means. But those aren't the discussions we are having. That's not even the discussions that people want to have with us, because we'll just be gaslighted, we'll be accused of being racist, we'll be accused of not wanting to invest in communities, even though what we're really talking about is not saddling them with debt for the next generation. That is the discussion, Mr. President, and that is why I urge all of my colleagues to say no. Because until those conversations happen, until we have a thoughtful, collaborative, inclusive conversation to build a better, stronger, better Chicago, nothing should be moving forward when it comes to saddling generations with more debt without a plan to rein in spending, rein in government, and make this a city that is self-sufficient and functional on the revenues that it has and has the ability to generate. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands, the chairwoman has... The chairwoman has asked for the deference to be able to close. Seeing no other hands, the chair recognizes again Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start off by making it crystal clear this morning that passing this ordinance today is the fiscally responsible thing to do. Refinancing high-interest rates, refinancing high-interest debts with lower-interest debt is something that every business, every household, every government does, and it would be financial mismanagement not to pass this ordinance. We're not kicking the can down the road. We're not adding to the city's debt burden, and we're not extending the terms of the current bonds we are refinancing today. Every day, we hear calls to eliminate waste, and that's exactly what we're doing this afternoon. We are saving the taxpayers tens of millions of dollars in expense that we have to pay on bonds we have already issued. We're not raising taxes. We're not borrowing funds from our future, and we're not levying fines. We are helping to balance our books through responsible fiscal management. Despite what you read and hear in this body, the City of Chicago has improved its financial situation and has enjoyed credit rating increases since these bonds were issued. That combined with improved market conditions that anyone, not just Chicago, can take advantage of, is what is allowing us to refinance for savings today. Now, we can squabble about par amounts or other inside-baseball terms, like we're all Wall Street experts that can game the market, but those questions have been answered already by the people the city has hired in this industry to renegotiate and negotiate the real terms based on real market conditions for the most benefit of the people of the City of Chicago. And that benefit, my colleagues, is enormous. It's $90 million in savings this year, 2024, and another $35 million in savings in 2025. So for everyone who asks, "What is Chicago doing to put its fiscal house in order?", here you go. That's what we're doing today. This is what it looks like. I want to thank you, Mayor Johnson. I want to thank Jill Jaworski and Brendan White and the entire finance team for putting together this bond package. And I want to thank my colleagues for all of the pointed questions, all of your comments, and support for this ordinance. I think the ordinance is better today than it was when it was introduced. Unless there are other questions, Mr. Mayor, I ask for the council's favorable consideration of this ordinance, and I ask for a roll call vote.
Very much. There's a motion for the passage of this particular item through roll call vote. Madam Clerk, could you please make the application available? The e-vote application is there for you, Alders, to record your vote at this time.
The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please use your e-device to record your vote. Please raise your hand if you need support. The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Alderperson Ramirez. Alderperson Scott. Alderperson Cruz. Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Alderperson Mitz. Alderperson Riley. Alderperson Knudsen. Alderperson Silverstein said no?
No.
No. Alderperson's no. All right. Alderperson Mitz, just checking one more time. All right.
And Madam Clerk, this is Alderman Knudsen. I voted yes.
Alderperson Knudsen, you have yes?
Yep, I mean, yes. It says no, but I mean, yes.
You are yes. Okay. Sorry, we didn't hear you correctly. We will switch that to a yes. Alderperson Mitz? All right. All those voting who wish, we will close the vote.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. There are 35 yeas, 12 nays this motion passes. On the motion to reconsider, the Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of reconsidering this vote signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. This motion fails for miscellaneous business. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Except for the ordinance setting the date and time of the next meeting. I am not aware of any miscellaneous.
Very well. For the date and time of the next meeting, the Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
I've handed up an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance?
Be it ordained by the City Council of City Chicago, Section 1, the next regular meeting of the City Council of City Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, October 30, 2024, beginning at 10:00 a.m. in the council chamber on the second floor in City Hall, 121 North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. This ordinance will be taken effect and be enforced from and after its passage. Gregory Mitchell, Alderman, 7th Ward.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
I move passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. For the omnibus, Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Budget and Government Operations and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell on a motion to adjourn.
Hearing no further business before this body, I move that we adjourn.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. This meeting is adjourned.